Like thirty seconds. You want to start the recording now? Thanks. We have to wait till exactly seven o'clock, so patience. Okay. Good evening, I will call to order the regular city council meeting of March 3rd, 2025. And if everybody that's able to, please stand and join me for the pledge allegiance. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Law?
Present.
Obolinski?
Here.
Jess?
Here.
Sokach?
Here.
Noack?
Here.
Thank you.
Right. Item four is closed session report, there was no closed session, so no report. Item five, presentations. Our first presentation tonight is designating March 31st, 2025 as Caesar Chavez Day. Do we have anybody from the diversity commission here? I don't believe so, okay. I will read the proclamation anyway. Whereas Caesar Chavez, Caesar Estrada Chavez was a visionary leader who dedicated his life to the pursuit of justice, dignity, and the rights of working people. And whereas born on March 31st, 1927 into a family of migrant farm workers, Chavez experienced firsthand the hardships of those who toiled in the fields to feed the nation and transformed that experience into a movement rooted in nonviolence, unity, and perseverance. And whereas through the founding of the United Farm Workers, UFW, and the power of collective action, Chavez tirelessly fought for fair wages, better working conditions, and the fundamental belief that every worker deserves respect and dignity. And where his leadership inspired generations to stand up against injustice, proving that positive change is possible when people come together in solidarity. And whereas his enduring mantra coined by Dolores Herta, si se puede, yes it can be done, continues to serve. You correcting me?
No.
All right.
Just talking with you.
Okay. Continues to, sorry. Continues to serve as a rallying cry for those striving for fairness and equality in all aspects of life. Now therefore I, Sue Noack, Mayor of the City of Pleasant Hill, on behalf of the city council do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2025 as Caesar Chavez Day. And the City of Pleasant Hill, in recognition of the profound contributions of Caesar Chavez, encourage all residents to honor his legacy by reaffirming their commitment to social justice, dignity in labor, and the empowerment of all people regardless of background or circumstance. Okay. We will move on then to item 5.2, which is a proclamation designating the month of March as Red Cross Awareness Month. And I'd like to invite Matt Smith up to the podium to receive the proclamation. Let me read that first, and then I'll read it first, and then you can comment.
I would be happy to, thank you.
Okay. Whereas March is American. Now I've done it. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, when we recognize the compassion of people in Pleasant Hill and renew our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors in need. And whereas American Red Cross volunteers have stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, excuse me, a second. Excuse me. Around the world, bringing out the best of humanity in times of crisis, as Clara Barton, founder of the American Red Cross did over 140 years ago. Whereas the volunteers, donors, and supporters shine a beacon of hope in people's darkest hours, delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, delivering international aid, and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. Whereas with nearly 1,000 volunteers in Contra Costa County and over 1,800 youth and adults trained through Pillcase Project and preparedness programs, the American Red Cross assisted or responded to 94 disasters, assisting 204 families, and through their Sound the Alarm program installed 846 smoke alarms, making homes safer. And whereas Contra Costa County residents donated over 17,000 units of lifesaving blood, hosted 520 blood drives, trained over 11,800 citizens in first aid, CPR, AED, and aquatics, provided 463 case services to military members and their families, and provided humanitarian aid internationally. And whereas this work to uplift our community is made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it is needed. Now therefore I, Sue Noack, Mayor of the City of Pleasant Hill, on behalf of the city council do hereby proclaim March 2025 as American Red Cross Month. And the City of Pleasant Hill, in honor of their remarkable service, encourage all citizens of Pleasant Hill to reach out and support its mission. Sorry for that.
Well, Noack, that was quite a proclamation, you wiped out about two-thirds of what I was gonna say. No, that's fine, actually. Good evening, Mayor and council members and public, my name is Matt Smith. I'm a volunteer with Red Cross, right up the road here. Our office is at Christ the King Church. We only moved in there a couple of years ago. We're grateful to the church for providing that space for us because we are always dependent on community support. As you probably know, Red Cross has been around, as mentioned, since the Civil War. It was started by a remarkable woman, her name was Clara Barton, the angel of the battlefield. She adopted the very new principles of the International Red Cross, which had only been started two years earlier. She applied them to the United States and in particular the battlefields of the Civil War. What was remarkable, she helped both Union and Confederate soldiers. And that tradition has been passed down to this day. We make no judgments, we have no litmus test as to who we support. Anybody who needs our help, we are very happy to reach out to. In our disaster cycle services, we range from house fires to wildfires, floods, tornadoes. I'm sure you've seen it on TV. It's quite a broad mission, but we also do more than just disasters. As you mentioned, we also do blood services, we do aid to military families. We have a contingent up at Travis Air Force Base who helps the families of soldiers who are deployed. We also provide a lot of educational services. You may have taken one of our CPA, CPR classes, or our Sound the Alarm classes. And then we also provide aid and assistance to the International Red Cross. So with that said, most recently, we've had a pretty busy last six months. I was up at the Butte County Chico Fire, the park fire up there, helping run a shelter. Ended up down in Georgia for Helene, and then we got a two for the price of one there when Milton roared through two. And then most recently, I was down in Pasadena for the LA fires down there. So unless you actually become a volunteer, I hope not to ever see you at my place of my work, but we'll be always there if you do need us. And we thank you for your recognition for the work that we do. You know, one last point, there's over 100,000 Red Cross volunteers in the United States. Over 90% of Red Cross is volunteers, we have a very small staff. So if you're ever interested in being a volunteer, you know where our office is. And don't forget to give blood as well if you are able. So thank you so much, appreciate your recognition.
Okay. Now that I've recovered from my coughing spell, we will move on to 5.3, which is the introduction of civic action commissioners. And I will turn that over to Vice Mayor Jess.
Thanks Mayor Noack. Councilmember Amanda Sokach and I serve on the interviewing and nominating committee. And we've interviewed several qualified candidates to serve on the Civic Action Commission. And ultimately, we forward recommendations to appoint Scott Roberts and reappoint Barb Thor and Faye Donahue. So I just wanted to introduce these people. And first, I guess we'll call up Scott Roberts, come on up. And while Scott's making his way to the podium. He has been a resident of Pleasant Hill just over three years. Though he and his family have lived in the East Bay for many years and grew up in Walnut Creek, which we like to call here at the diocese Pleasant Hill adjacent. He and his wife have four children, including a two-year-old who will grow up here in Pleasant Hill. So awesome. Scott is currently a Realtor and has a BFA in graphic design and advertising, bringing extensive experience in marketing, including creative direction, website design, email marketing, and business development. Scott has experienced coordinating homeless outreach programs, including donation drives through a local church, and is member of the Pleasant Hill Neighborhood Association. His interests include home renovation and design, drone photography, motorcycle riding, and obviously, if he's involved in this, community events and outreach. So congrats and welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Feel free to say a few words, I think I've kind of foamed the runway for you. Everybody, but we'd like to hear something from you, absolutely.
Oh yeah, good evening, everybody. I'm truly honored to be standing in front of you and thank you for appointing me to this position. Been trying to figure out a way to give back to this community. And it's been an honor to be a part of it for the last three years. My wife and I, we have basically four children, 22, 20, 20, and two. So we're starting all over. So I said we're gonna be here quite a while. So yeah, so I basically am honored to be appointed to the position, looking forward to definitely rolling up my sleeves and getting my hands dirty and trying to help this community in any way that I can. I'm basically involved in a lot of outreach programs as well as, you know, providing homes for people. So I'm wondering how I can try to lend all these things in this capacity that I'm gonna be taking on, as well as trying to hopefully improve some new techniques that we can get, community involvement and engagement, as well as trying to do some online things as well for people who can't get to these types of events. Again, I just wanted to say thank you guys and appreciate it, excited to start working with y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we have Barb Thor. Barb was initially appointed to the Civic Action Commission in 2019 and has served as its chair since 2020. Barb has a strong project management background, including PR, group sales, focus groups, trade shows, and relationship marketing. Prior experience included executing programs and events of various sizes. So you can see why the Civic Action Commission kind of works for Barb and why she's been so great at it. While participating on this commission, Barb's leadership has been instrumental in facilitating the planning of the summer concerts, Community Service Day, and the addition of letters to Santa component. Just making sure, okay, yeah. To the Light of the Night Annual Holiday Event, answering letters to over 300 children. The commission has elevated the concert series, if you haven't been there in the last couple of years during her term, by adding family fun zones, food, truck dining, and the inclusion of nonprofit groups providing information at the events. Barb served on the Diversity Subcommittee of the Civic Action Commission that worked to ensure Pleasant Hill is a welcoming, safe, tolerant, and inclusive community. And the city council established the nine-member Diversity Commission based on the concepts of the original Civic Action Commission Subcommittee. Anyway, obviously, as you could probably tell, her background, experience, and leadership has made her a great asset to the Civic Action Commission. Welcome back and congrats and thank you.
Thank you for those kind words.
I wrote them all myself just now.
I wanted to write them as you were saying them. So thank you Vice Mayor Jess and Mayor Noack and the members of the city council. It's been my honor to serve on the Civic Action Commission, and I look forward to continuing to elevate our current programs and events while always seeking new opportunities as well. As Chair of our commission, I would like to thank all of the commissioners that work so hard. I'd also like to congratulate Commissioner Donahue on her reassignment, reappointment, and to welcome Scott as our newest commissioner. Again, I thank you, and I am sure that I will see all of you at our first concert by the lake on May 25th. Thank you.
And certainly, last but not least, Faye Donahue, come on up. Faye was appointed to the Civic Action Commission in 1995. Committee that has changed to a commission by the city council in 2005. Faye's contributions have been valued throughout the past 30 years, and she has been appointed to serve another four-year term. Faye has a, I'm gonna say a distinguished, I don't wanna say long history, I'm gonna say distinguished history, participating in community service. And she has been part of several significant firsts, including the first summer concert in 2000, the first art jazz and wine festival in 2002, which she helped create while serving on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. Obviously, that continues today. The first Community Service Day held in 2005 by the Civic Action Commission. And that's, as we all know, an annual event that is still going strong. In addition to that, for the last 30 years, Faye has served on the Chamber Board for 13 years, been a member of the Pleasant Hill Rotary for 30 years, serving as its Public Relations Director for 20. All of this, I mean, you were like a teenager when.
Yes.
Tremendous, so that speaks volumes as well. Faye's background in graphic design and marketing, combined with her passion for and dedication to community involvement, has made Faye, obviously, a tremendous asset to this commission and to the community. So thank you and welcome.
Glad you feel that way. Anyway, yes, I just want to thank all of the city council, and these two especially, for letting me come on and start a fourth decade on the Civic Action Commission. I think that'll be fun. We love being on, and I say we, I'm including my husband because he's right there beside me, whatever we do. I joined this at a time of the low point, the lowest point in our life at all because of the family loss. And Civic Action Commission really helped us get through that too. So we owe you as much. So thank you very much, we enjoyed it, I'm looking forward to another four years and another decade.
Are you shooting beat Chuck Murphy on Longest Commissioner?
Yeah, he's way up there, isn't he?
He is, 44 years, you gotta shoot for that.
I'm not gonna go that long, I don't think. But thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Faye. So just as a point of, to make it official, what we do, we recommend these appointments, and it's part of our consent calendar. And when the city council approves the consent calendar, those are official, official. Thank you.
We've already done that, though.
We already did that?
We vote on it and then.
Yeah, I knew that, just, yeah, I knew that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to remind you of that, yeah, okay. Okay, we will quickly move on to item six then, which is the city manager comments. And I invite our city manager, Ethan Bennernagle, for his comments.
Good evening, thank you Mayor Noack and members of the council. Good evening to the public, a couple of announcements for everyone. You may have read about this in the biweekly update, but beginning this week, the Pleasant Hill Police Department will be conducting traffic and parking enforcement in and around schools during the morning and afternoon pickup times. The effort is being made to help maintain safety for cyclists and pedestrians around the schools. The police department encourages all those dropping off or picking up children to obey the rules of the road, of course, but also to refrain from parking in red zones or blocking driveways and crosswalks. The police department hopes that we can all work together to help maintain a safe environment around our schools. And attention for all those you living in Gregory Gardens. You may have heard or seen Central San, Central Sanitary District is proceeding with the second of three renovation projects planned for the Gregory Gardens neighborhood. This project will replace or rehabilitate approximately 1.8 miles of sewer pipe at several sites in the neighborhood. Notices will be mailed to the area residents, providing a week's notice before work begins. If you have any questions or you'd like more information on the project, you can contact Central San's Senior Community Affairs Representative, gentleman named Chris Carpenter. His phone number is 925-229-7316. He can also be emailed at ccarp@centralsan.org. My last announcement is something you may have read about this, you may have read about this next announcement in last week's news. But the residents are encouraged to examine, and we have a link on our city website, the new Fire Hazard Severity Local Responsibility Maps, or commonly known as the fire maps, that have been released by the Office of the State Fire Marshal and are being promoted by the Fire District here in Contra Costa County. The maps are the latest released from the state office and are intended to show residents where the highest level of hazard is. Hazard is based on physical conditions that create expected fire behavior, whatever that means, expected fire behavior over a 50-year period. I think LA showed us the difference there. But anyway, without consideration of short-term modifications, to see any of those new maps or to provide public comment, you can visit the Fire District's website, cccfpd.org/lra-maps. That concludes my announcements, happy to yield any questions.
Any questions? Nope, okay, thank you. We will now move on to item seven, which is council announcements and reports. 7.1 is reports from council members on meetings or conferences attended at city expense. Anybody would, Councilmember Sokach, you wanna start?
Yes, so I attended the League of Cities Meeting, I believe it was last Thursday, in San Leandro, where we heard legislative updates from East Bay Assembly members and networked with other council members.
Anybody else? Councilmember Law?
Yes, I too attended the League of California Cities Meeting as well with, I think Mayor Noack was there as well. Oh, you were, oh right, I rode with you, I'm sorry. That was my car.
It was a busy weekend, it's okay.
It was a busy weekend.
See, you're just diddling that, right? Okay. Yeah, I just wanna, we met with, we had legislative updates from Senators Aragon and Wahab, and Assembly members Bauer Cahann and Ortega. Most of the discussion was on affordable housing bills that are coming in front of the legislature over the next several months. Okay, we will move on next to announcements from council members. I'll start on the other end, Councilmember Law?
Only announcement was that I attended opening day for the Pleasant Hill Baseball Association, and that was well received. It was really exciting, and my kids are actually playing this season too. So hopefully you guys will come out to any of the games and, you know, support the association at the snack shack.
Yes, Councilmember Obolinski?
So I wanted to publicly apologize to the Pleasant Hill Baseball Association for not coming. We got an email, my son plays water polo, we got an email at 8:30 in the evening, which I don't check my email at 8:30 in the evening. So in the morning, I was rushing to get to a water polo tournament, and they moved our game times from 10:30 to 9:30, so I had to rush down to San Jose. So first, let me apologize for that. This, just to let everyone know, this past week in the Greater Slavic community, we celebrated Maslenica. It's one of the oldest holidays that we celebrate dating back to the second century. It's where we welcome spring, and each day means something different. But basically, we eat a lot of pancakes, really thin ones called blini. And the final day is Forgiveness Sunday, where we ask for forgiveness. So I ask again for all of your forgiveness for not going to the PHPA baseball. For eating all the pancakes as well. Yes, and I wanted to thank Madam Mayor for bringing up the, for recognizing Caesar Chavez. When I said si se puede, it's just a call to action. When you say it, it just automatically comes to me to say it. And I am wearing my butterfly to be in solidarity with our immigrant community. So si se puede, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Jess?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, kudos, we all attended, I believe, the State of the City last week with our fearless leader laying out the forecast for the year. So thank you to the mayor. Tended the East Bay Leadership Council Open House. They are expanding in Walnut Creek. And if any of you either listening or in the audience is interested, they are starting this program called Building a Bench. And they basically help and teach you kind of how to, you know, run for office. So if that's something that you're interested in or others are interested in that you might know, I encourage you to reach out to the East Bay Leadership Council. Also, along with my colleagues as well, I think, except for the water polo dad. We went, attended the 50th Annual Choice in Aging Crab Feed. Choice in Aging is a great organization, helping seniors, you know, live, basically live their best lives, and was happy to be a part of that. And of course, shared a car with Councilmember Law in the PHBA parade, which I've been to a million times, but it was great to sit next to her because she had never been in this parade. And it was, it was like, it was just great to see it through her eyes and how excited you were, and made me excited to be, go through it yet again. So that was a good time, and PHBA does a remarkable job. So thank you.
Councilmember Sokach?
Yeah, I also attended, like Zach said, the Choice in Aging Crab Feed, which was a great event, the State of the City, and not to flex, but I think I had the best car in the PHBA baseball parade. I got the yellow convertible, so that was very fun, very community event.
Okay. So first, yes, Mayor State of the City was last Tuesday, and I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for having hosted that, the staff of Back40, which did a great job providing breakfast and just the environment. And of course, our staff here for helping out, put it all together, getting my slides up and everything else. So it was a very successful event there, it was our first time there, and I thought it went really well. Also, the Choice in Aging Crab Feed, for those who don't know, Choice in Aging actually is based here in Pleasant Hill, it's up near DVC. It does daycare for the elderly, a lot of dimension disabled, really giving other caregivers respite. So very long-acting community, we're hoping that they get started. They were expecting to build a 81-unit low-income housing at some point, and we're hoping that gets started fairly soon. Opening Day of Baseball was fun. For those of you who don't know, there are nearly 2,000 kids in that baseball association. That parade, I think, was almost longer than our Fourth of July parade, there were so many kids. But it's really cute when you see the little four-year-olds with baseball caps that don't really quite fit on their head coming through the parade. That's really quite fun. Also, a safety meeting at Sequoia Middle School. And then I attended the Sequoia Elementary Gala event, which was auctioning off a mayor for the day on Saturday night. So it was a fairly busy weekend. Anyway, we will move on from here, go to public comment. The public is welcome at this time to address the city council on items on the consent calendar or other items not listed on the agenda but within the council's jurisdiction. Comments are limited to two minutes per speaker. You may provide comments to Leon, who's coming up with, I guess, some cards for me. Thank you. Okay. First person, Cara DeYoung.
Good evening. My name is Cara DeYoung, and I'm a community member who encourages active transportation in Pleasant Hill. Active transportation is when folks get to the destination they were already going on their own power, so we're talking about walking and biking. I have a child at Pleasant Hill Elementary, Pleasant Hill Middle, and also at College Park. And I care about their safety getting to and from school on bikes, but not only them, but the entire community of Pleasant Hill. Which is why I created and directed the Bike Family Festival that happened in September this past, at the library, which was an opportunity to educate and skill-build around biking for kids. And with over 2,000 attendees at that event, I think it also evidenced the desire of our community to get on their bikes and ride. Additionally, I also am the creator of the weekly Walk and Roll Program that's been running at PHE for the last three years, but now also. running at PHE for the last three years, but now also runs at Gregory Gardens and Strandwood. So did you know that a third of all of those schools' enrollment now get to school every single week actively, on active transportation, on their own two lakes? So that means hundreds of children are biking and walking and scooting every single week, and we can measure it. And so we're encouraging the folks at these schools to be active, and they're doing it. So I'm here tonight to ask the Pleasant Hill City Council to stay vigilant, prioritizing infrastructure changes around schools that make it safe for students and their families to walk and bike as well as drive. All transportation options need to be equally prioritized, and unfortunately, the car is the singular priority around schools at this time. I'm joined tonight with a representative from each of those walk-and-roll schools, and each of whom will share their specific infrastructure needs for their site to get their students to school safely. So I beg you to consider their requests urgently for the sake of the safety of our students in Pleasant Hill. Thank you.
Are you going to do another bike festival this year?
Well, we're talking about it.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to collaborate on that.
It was a fantastic event, and I hope you do.
Thank you, I hope so too.
Next up is Mindy Armando.
Good evening, members of the city council, and thank you for having us all speak tonight. My name is Mindy Armando, I'm a representative for Strandwood Elementary, and we are here to address some serious safety issues on Gladys Drive, specifically the, between the school entrance and Rose Lane during pickup and drop-off times. So this stretch of road becomes a chaotic and dangerous mix of pedestrians, cyclists, scooters, and vehicles. We've witnessed numerous close encounters and collisions, and we fear a serious accident is imminent. The problem stems from a lack of dedicated space for vulnerable road users. So children on scooters, parents with strollers, cyclists are forced to navigate a narrow corridor alongside the parked vehicles and moving vehicles, creating hazardous situations. We ask, what we're asking is not impossible, we're asking for common sense measures prioritizing the safety of our children. Specifically, we propose limiting the street parking on Gladys Drive between the school and Rose Lane during school hours. This will provide more space for pedestrians and cyclists, we have already secured the support of the residents on 413 Gladys Drive for a resident-only parking during these times. Strict enforcement of the new daytime crosswalk laws requiring parking within 20 feet of crosswalks, this includes the installation of clear no-parking signs and visible paint markings. We understand the traffic flow and parking are complex issues, however, the safety of our children are the top priority. We have seen successful measures at Valhalla Elementary and providing safety bike lanes. We know that changes can be made and accommodate all the road users. So we urge the student council in collaboration with Mount Diablo Unified School District to take swift action for these requests, and we're ready to work with you to find a solution that ensures safety for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Josh Kelly.
Good evening, council members. My name is Joshua Kelly. My family and I have been blessed to call Pleasant Hill home for almost 10 years, and we have no plans of leaving. We love this community and the strong connections we share with our neighbors. A big part of that connection is how easily we can get around, whether bike, bus, or on foot. But while Pleasant Hill is largely accessible, some places, particularly our schools, present challenges. My son Rowan is a second grader at Gregory Gardens Elementary. He loves riding his bike all over town, and I love riding with him to school each morning. But from the start, it was clear that the route to Gregory Gardens was problematic, congested with vehicles, narrow sidewalks, and in some areas, no sidewalks at all. Lost my place, darn it. We managed the best we could until we had an incredibly close call with a car, and that moment changed everything. Thanks to the efforts of Cara DeYoung and the Walk-and-Roll Program, as well as the Bike Family Fest, we've made real progress, like securing access through the back gate off of Evelyn Drive. But there is still critical work to be done, especially at the front of the school. We're asking the city to prioritize a protected green bike lane across both sides of Harriet Drive, from Ruth Drive west through Coroton Court to the front of the school. The canal crossing on Harriet has only one single narrow sidewalk that cannot safely accommodate children on bikes, scooters, and foot traffic at the same time. Without a protected bike lane, cyclists are forced into traffic, creating unsafe conditions for everyone. Adding a dedicated bike lane would reduce congestion at the Harriet-Ruth intersection, which is already a pinch point during school drop-off and pickup. It would also improve the flow of both pedestrians and vehicles while making school commute safer and more accessible. With the city's support, I truly believe this improvement can be completed soon, so let's keep the momentum going and make biking to school a safe and viable option for families. Thank you for your time and commitment to a safer and more connected Pleasant Hill.
Thank you. Next is Cat Modison? What was that? Oh, Hodge, oh, that's an H, oh, sorry, it looks like a, sorry, it's the way I write my M, so, sorry about that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Noack and council members. I'm here today to represent the biking and walking community of Pleasant Hill Elementary School. We have over two-thirds of the school registered with our active transportation scheme, Bike PHE, and over 200 children participate on a weekly basis. Today, I would ask the council members to make improving infrastructure around our schools a priority, making active transportation safer for our children and families. In particular, I would like to highlight two areas of concern, which we would like to see addressed before the next school year. Number one is the narrow sidewalk on Oak Park Boulevard by the Christian Church. Families arriving at school are often forced into the road due to a lack of space on the sidewalk. Increase in the size of this would make a vast improvement to the safety of children arriving at school. The second place I would like to draw your attention to is Geary Road. I understand this is a difficult road due to the shared responsibility with Walnut Creek City. However, it continues to be a major safety issue. Just last Friday, a juvenile was knocked off their bike whilst traveling in a bike lane. For families coming from the Walnut Creek side to Pleasant Hill Elementary, the speed and number of cars on this road is of great concern, in particular, the lack of awareness of the existing crossings. For example, only last week, whilst coming home from school with my seven-year-old son, we had entered the crosswalk when a car came speeding through the traffic lights, coming down past Palace Verdes. It failed to slow down, and I had to hold my son back as the car went through the crossing whilst we were in the middle of it. We ask that all pedestrian crossings on Geary are given flashing lights to help ensure drivers see those who are waiting to use them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any additional cards, Leon?
No additional comment cards.
Okay. Thank you. I'll now close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. May I have a motion to adopt consent calendar, or if there's anybody that wishes to remove an item or comment an item?
I will move to accept the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. May we roll call vote, please?
Law?
Yes.
Obolinski?
Yes.
Sches?
Yes.
Sakach?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Item 10, the action calendar. First up, 10.1, which is to adopt a resolution denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission's decision to approve a reasonable accommodation request for an attached carport structure for a person with disabilities at 135 Byron Court. And Haley, and she's already here. Our senior planner is going to introduce the item and provide a presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, I will be presenting a reasonable accommodation request that was previously partially approved by the Planning Commission, and the applicant has appealed that, and so that is what's before the council tonight. And so I'll just start with some of the kind of groundwork of what the project was and the project scope. So the project request was for an after-the-fact reasonable accommodation to legalize a non-permitted carport structure. That carport structure is shown here with that yellow arrow. And the request specifically was to allow the structure to encroach both into the minimum five-foot side yard setback, as well as to reduce the 15-foot aggregate side setback for the property. And ultimately, the request was in order to accommodate covered parking and a path of travel for an ADA van and access to the house for a person who resides at the home. And so here are some images of that unpermitted carport structure. It is located to the right side of the house and set back significantly from the street. So as I mentioned, back in June, the Planning Commission reviewed the request, and they approved a portion of the request. As I mentioned, there was two areas where the carport structure was seeking deviations from our standards, and so the Planning Commission approved the reduction in the 15-foot aggregate setback, but required a carport to be modified to meet the five-foot minimum side setback. And so what that really means is that this front post here, which currently encroaches into that front yard setback, would need to be relocated, either by moving it closer to the house by one foot, one inch, to meet that five foot, or by moving it back to meet the five-foot setback. And then on June 26, the applicant appealed, submitted an appeal to the city, and requested that that carport structure and that post be permitted to remain as-is, which would therefore encroach into that setback. And so just some site context here, this is an existing single-family home in a residentially-zoned area. And the site itself has previously received a reasonable accommodation request back in 2015. This was to convert the previously constructed garage for the home into a physical rehabilitation space for the homeowners. And so this obviously resulted in a loss of covered parking on site, and then this carport was constructed sometime in October or November of 2023 without permits, and then brought to the city's attention. And so as I mentioned, the applicant is requesting to locate that carport structure to maintain where it is now, which would encroach into the five-foot setback by, it would be located three foot 11 inches away from that side property line, and then also resulting in a reduced aggregate setback of 11 foot 8 inches, where 15 feet is required. And so I know I've been mentioning setbacks a lot, so I wanted to kind of explain a little bit of what those are for the specific property. And so in our residential zones, there is a minimum five-foot setback, and so on both sides of a property, any structures are required to be outside of that five-foot setback. And then there's an aggregate setback requirement, which is simply the sum of both sides. And so in this diagram here, both the green and the yellow are the side setbacks, both the green and the yellow have to be five feet in order to meet our standards, but the total of both sides together have to equal 15. So if you have a five-foot setback on one side, the other side would then need to be 10 to meet your 15. And in this case, what's requested is, again, the three foot 11 inch on one side, and the opposing side has a seven foot 9 inch setback already existing, which would result in 11 foot 8 inches. What the Planning Commission approved was to modify that carport so it met the five-foot minimum on that green side, and then you have your seven foot 9 existing again, and so still a reduction from the 15-foot aggregate, but it would be 12 foot 9. And so here is a, just a close-up of a proposed site plan, showing that carport and its location to the property line, and then that post in question. So when staff first got this proposal and did some analysis, that ultimately was presented to the Planning Commission, and that the Planning Commission considered in their approval of a portion of this reasonable accommodation, was looking at ADA analysis. And so an ADA van requires a 10-foot space, a parking space, and then adjacent to that, a five-foot wide unloading, unloading area. So together, that's 17 feet total. And then additionally, because of this specific scenario, the applicant stated they need a three-foot long ramp from the ADA space in order to get a wheelchair up into their home. So when you add that together, then that's 20 feet total. The proposed carport is 22 feet wide, so two feet wider than what is required to accommodate that ADA space. The other thing that planning staff and ultimately the Planning Commission considered is access into the carport structure. The applicant has stated in part of their appeal and part of their presentation to the Planning Commission that they are unable to relocate that front post in question because it would impede access into the carport structure. And so when staff looked at this and presented this to the Planning Commission, there is an existing pinch point currently between where the house, the front of the house is located, and the adjacent retaining wall and fence that is nine foot 8 inches wide. However, once you get back to where the carport is located, as I mentioned, it's set back significantly from the street, it opens up significantly because of the angle of the property. And so what Planning Commission approved at that location is a 20-foot, 1-inch-wide carport structure, which staff feels, and the Planning Commission agreed, ultimately provides ample access into that carport structure. And so ultimately, the Planning Commission, in making their decision, considered both the access and circulation in and out of that carport structure, the request, and were able to support the request for a reduced aggregate side yard setback, but ultimately required that the carport be modified to meet the five-foot minimum, and found that the structure therefore otherwise would have required or complied with all of the requirements. And so the Planning Commission ultimately approved a portion of it. And again, that front post is the one in question that is required to be relocated outside of the setback. And so tonight, staff's recommendation to the city council is that to adopt the resolution and deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's decision without prejudice. And I'm here if you have any questions, the applicant is also here and has a presentation too as well.
Oh, they have a presentation as well?
Or a verbal presentation.
Verbal presentation as well. Okay, why don't we take the applicant's verbal presentation, and then we'll ask for questions.
My name is Jim Leveque, this is my wife Juliana and my son Alex, and we're here today to appeal the Planning Commission Resolution Number 1124 of our carport structure, which currently encroaches on the property setback requirements. The carport is necessary to accommodate our disabled son Alex, who will rely on a handicapped man with a ramp for transportation. We believe this situation presents a unique hardship that justifies an exemption or variance from the standard property setback rules. The carport shields him from the elements such as rain or extreme heat when he enters or exits his vehicle. This is critical to ensuring his health, safety, and comfort. We are asking for an additional two feet of space. Resolution Number 1124 includes a statement that, quote, "carport structure is two feet wider than what is necessary to accommodate the needs of the disabled resident at the home," and that the requested accommodation for 22-feet-wide carport structure is not necessary nor reasonable, provide the requested covered parking and path of travel for the disabled person residing at the home. We believe that these conclusions were made in error. Resolution 1124 also calls for relocating the northeast post one foot, one inch away from the property line, more away from the property line to comply with a minimum five-foot side yard setback requirement. So basically, we are asking for a one-foot, one-inch reasonable accommodation so that we will have full access to the 20 feet the resolution proposes. For Alex, usable space is essential. The minimum space of 20 feet the city is proposing seems generous, but placing the carport supports within that space significantly reduces the available usage space for maneuvering on and off the ramps from the vehicle to our home. The ADA parking regulation that Resolution 1124 refers to do not include getting around obstacles in this space. As an example, when you drive up to a handicapped space, like you have here at the Pleasant Hill parking lot, you do not have to worry about getting around support beams. And she showed you recently that there was a 10-foot spot for the handicapped man and a five-foot minimum spot for his access, but even in Pleasant Hill's parking lot, you have eight feet and eight feet for access. To maintain the proposed 20 feet of functional space for his vehicle and ramps, we propose the carport supports are allowed outside the 20-foot line. ensuring all valuable, available space maintains usable for safe, accessible maneuvering and transportation. Again, this is only an additional two feet of space we are asking for. The ramp from our home is three feet wide. Alex needs to be off the ramp and flat. His chair is three feet, six inches on flat ground. ADA legal width of a parking spot is eight feet and ADA legal width for maneuvering is eight feet. That's a total of twenty-two feet, six inches. As built now, the space between the posts right now is eighteen feet, six inches. Moving the post another one foot, one inch will reduce the space between the post to just over seventeen feet. Compliance with the American Disabilities Act, the ADA emphasizes that reasonable accommodations must be made for individuals with disabilities to ensure their full and equal access to services and amenities. Our carport, we believe, is a necessary accommodation that aligns with the intent of the ADA as it directly supports our son's mobility and safety by providing shelter during critical moments of loading and unloading from his vehicle. By allowing this exception, the city would be upholding its obligation to support residents with disabilities and maintaining accessible living environments. Pursuant to Pleasant Hill Municipal Code Section eighteen one three zero oh three oh, we request that the Pleasant Hill City Council modify Resolution eleven twenty-four as noted. Grant a variance allowing the supports for the carport to extend beyond the twenty foot minimum while preserving the full usable twenty feet necessary for loading and unloading our son. Approve the reasonable accommodation to reduce the minimum five foot side yard setback requirement and remove the condition of approval requiring relocation of the northeast post. These minor deviations would have no adverse effects or impact on our neighbors or the surrounding community, but would significantly improve the safety and accessibility of our home for our disabled son. In closing, we ask, does the city of Pleasant Hill only allow the minimum space required for disabled and handicapped residents to gain access into their homes? We urge you to consider our requests with compassion and a focus on accessibility. Our family is faced with the unique challenge and the carport is a vital component in ensuring our son's well-being and independence. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for us?
You can sit down and then we'll see who has questions for whoever. Okay? Thank you. Okay, questions? Amanda?
Question for our staff. How was the unpermitted structure brought to the attention of the city staff? Was there a complaint? Did someone drive by it?
I believe it was brought to by our, one of our building inspectors who was in the neighborhood.
And what are there particular concerns that the city has around the setbacks? In other words, is it related to safety or aesthetics or why, you know, why are the setbacks? I know it's Planning one oh one, but why are the setbacks exist?
So in general, there's a couple of reasons. Setbacks allow for light and air and circulation between structures. They, there is a little bit of urban design and kind of neighborhood pattern component to that. And then also for, to believe access to rear yards for various needs.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sherr?
Thank you. This might be, you might be able to answer this. If not, I'm sure Levecq could. With that post in the front there, is that, is that a six by post? A six by six post? And here's why I'm asking, because is the measurement of one foot, one inch, is that, is that on center? On center with the post or to the edge of the post?
So I can answer that piece and then we can ask clarification on the size, but we measure setbacks to the outer edge of the post.
Okay. Okay, so the outer edge of the post, so, okay, so that's, is that a six by six, sir? Do you know? Is that a six by six post? Okay, so that's a six by six post. So you're, so, okay, and then you're gonna, okay. So, okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Law, go ahead.
So this was built without a permit, correct?
Correct.
And planning has offered a viable solution for them, correct?
Yeah, we recognized the need for the carport.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And so this is all about setbacks and following approved building practices within the city?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to ask, ask those specific questions. Another third question I had for you is, is there space in front of the garage for a covered carport? Or within, within the, I think it was a twenty or twenty-five feet setback?
It would be a twenty foot front setback and I do not believe there would be enough space to meet the depth requirement.
Within, within the, the front of the garage, right? It's only in that side area there. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Law?
Hi. So I understand that the planning commission denied the appeal and the findings indicate that the post could be moved to conform to the zoning requirement. But my question was actually, was there a reason why it was denied? Because was there a necessary change that impacts the rest of the neighborhood, such as like a fundamental alteration to the land use or zoning?
The planning commission, actually, they approved a portion of the reasonable accommodation. So they were able to make the findings to support a reduction in that aggregate side setback because they recognized that if that fifteen foot aggregate were to be met, then the carport would be reduced in size to a point that then would not meet the needs for covered parking. But they could not make the findings to support the minimum five foot setback requirement. And so that's the portion that they did not approve. Simply because they felt that the carport could be modified and still meet the reasonable accommodation request and meet the minimum setback requirement.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I just mentioned that because under Chapter eighteen point one oh one, two point oh two oh, let's just say all the whole thing of the municipal, it defines reasonable accommodation, meaning providing disabled persons flexibility in the application of land use and zoning regulations and procedures, or even waiving certain requirements when necessary to eliminate barriers to housing opportunities. And it may include such things as yard area modification or ramps, handrails, or other such accessibility improvements, hardscape additions such as widened driveways, parking area or walkways, building additions for accessibility, tree removal, or reduced off-street parking where the disability clearly limits the number of people operating vehicles. And reasonable accommodation does not include an accommodation which would impose an undue financial administrative burden or require a fundamental alteration to the nature of the city's land use and zoning program. So when those two requirements, as I looked and see the agenda packet, I noticed that there isn't an undue financial burden that would occur to the city, right? And then also the question about the alteration of the nature of the land use. If the applicant, not saying that the applicant will be moving at any point, but in the future, if that location was, for example, the resident no longer lived there, then there would be, it would go back to the original, it would conform back to the zoning and planning code, right?
Yeah, they would have to either remove the carport altogether or modify it to where it met our current standards.
And so right now, we're talking about a reasonable accommodation and whether or not we should approve or that we should deny the appeal at this point in time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So one of the options was to move just the post backward toward the backyard, right? So that wouldn't reduce the size of the carport. You're just moving the post back, right?
Because of the angle of the property, it really widens out at the back. So, I mean, you know, it would be up to the applicant to figure out exactly how far back. Maybe it's a combination of slightly far back and slightly more in. But yes, there is the opportunity to move it back.
Okay, because that seems to accommodate both sides of things.
Yeah.
Oh, you want to answer that question as well?
Sorry, Mayor Noack.
You have to come up, sorry. You have to come up to the, to the microphone. Sorry.
I have to move the post back five and a half feet, which would now make the depth of the carport only sixteen feet. So you couldn't get the whole vehicle back inside the post.
But can you move the post without moving the roof? I mean, I-
No, you, how am I going to extend? The roof would be extended probably thirteen feet beyond the post. It has to have some sort of support.
I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to be able to question that one, but Haley, maybe you can address that since you're the city engineer.
So the, the post, the way, maybe can we throw up an image of the carport? That might be helpful. Thank you. And so where the post is now, there might be, I think, what, a foot or two overhang of the eve?
Yep.
And so if that post were to be located back and maintaining the existing roof structure now, there might be about a six foot overhang. And obviously, I'm not an engineer either, but you know, we did speak with our building official and he, you know, did mention it could be modified as such. We would, we would, it would have to go through building permit plans, you know, to confirm structurally it was sound, but.
Yeah. You know, I think this is one of the issues of not having gotten it permitted first was, was being able to have our engineers take a look at it and figure this out so that you didn't have to do after the fact. And, and so that, this always puts us in a difficult position on reasonable accommodations after the fact. And obviously, you know, you're aware of permitting issues because you had to redo a permit on a previous area. So that does a little concerning to me that-
Well, that's correct, but with me, and that's my fault. There was no plumbing, there was no electrical, there was, it was just a carport structure. I personally didn't think that it had to be permitted. I know that my garage had to be permitted. It was part of my house.
Yeah, no, I, I realize that. My suggestion for anybody listening is if you're building something, because we've had this with fences and other things as well, always check with the city if you need to permit stuff because then we come back with this issue that makes things a little bit more difficult.
I understand.
And, you know, forgiveness is always, doesn't always happen in those kinds of situations. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Sue? Yeah, hold on, hold on. So there is, no change to the roof structure is being requested. It's just the post at this point? Or there was some discussion of having to amend the roof structure as well on the-
Well, as part of the, you can see here in this image, the aerial image, the carport currently is not square. And it actually currently does not meet lot coverage calculations. But even from the beginning of the applicant's request, they were always going to kind of shave off that far side portion and make it square so that it complied with lot coverage. So that was already included in the applicant's application and then the approval.
Okay, and they're not repealing that portion of it?
No.
Okay, all right. So, and the other question is, you've got, you've got two cars in the carport at this point, right? So, so, and, and the ramp would be off to the left as we're looking at this, right? To the house?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Blonsky, you had an additional question?
Yeah, I mean, the reason I, and I really sympathize with their situation. I mean, the reason I asked about the front of the garage is because I have some neighbors directly across the street from me that I've known for years. And they, her brother, who's in a similar situation, just passed last year. And for twenty-two years, she wanted to put a carport out front, but we're not able to do that. So I understand. That's why I asked that question. Now, the, the header that's on top, going from the, the left post to the right post, that's a, how, how thick? I mean, maybe that question for-
Support beam?
Yeah, the support beam, the header up there. How thick and how big is that? That's a-
Big piece of OSB.
I believe it was one by six. So about eighteen inches tall by-
Eighteen inches tall?
Almost a foot wide.
Laminated?
Yeah, that looks like an OSB.
And if I move the post backwards, I have to take the whole front of the carport off. Because there's another post that supports it. The beam goes straight across to that post. So if I, if I took that post, that she wants me to move the one foot, one inch, and I put that post five foot back, I'd also have to take the post on the other side and put that post five foot back. And what I'm saying is I don't know structurally if that'll support the front half that's existing of the-
Well, that's what I was asking is, so with building, maybe they can, the, the actual laminate piece here, you're talking about, about having to move the post back and not be able to use that header anymore?
Right.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
At all, unless I move the other post on the other side.
So then you have to take that header down, move the post back and reinstall the header, or you-
We shouldn't credit-
Just asking your advice. Yeah, I'm just asking. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'd have to move both posts back and reinstall the-
Mayor Noack.
I'm chuckling because I'm resisting the urge myself. So, yeah.
Okay, you're not going to try to re-engineer this as well, right? Okay, all right, all right. Councilmember Law?
May I ask the applicant a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so how is the current carport accommodating for your son at this point in time? And what would the difference make if there was that change in the structure? How would it impact your family?
Well, the, the problem is that there will no longer be two cars parked there. The handicapped van is wider and only one carport will fit there. Previously, before we put this carport up, we put it, Alex would get sick every winter. If we, and end up in the hospital, actually, by taking him in and out of the house and he'd get a cold. And once he gets a cold, he ends up in the hospital. So we tried to cover it with a tarp originally. Our neighbor Nancy let us put a post up in her yard, two posts in her yard, to extend the tarp wide enough to lift it high enough to be over the cars to support coverage during the sun and rain, but it would fill up with water and inevitably sag onto the cars. If, if they don't allow this, it restricts Alex's access to the van. In other words, if that post has to get moved either sideways or backwards, first of all, if it has to get moved backwards, it won't allow coverage of the complete van and his access. If it has to get moved sideways, we'd have to get the van far enough over that the, the available space for him to maneuver his chair between the ramp that comes out of our house and the ramp that comes out of the handicap van would be about three feet instead of the five or eight feet that they give us. So it would make it pretty difficult.
So I have a, a question. You've got two cars in there, but if one car is, if his van is in there, isn't there sufficient room for all that maneuvering and one car not be underneath the carport?
No, because where the white car sits right now, you'd have to put, the van has to be put in straight. So you'd have to move the white car over about six, five feet to get it by the post that you're asking me to move. Okay, if I leave the existing structure to cover the car, the post would have to be moved a foot and a half. So the car would have to be moved two or three feet to the side. So the access between the house, where you can see the garbage can and the ramp, and the ramp from the house, the area, the flat area between the two ramps would only be about five feet.
But does, yeah, so I, my question really is, you know, having one of the other cars sit in the driveway and the other, then you have plenty of room in the carport to maneuver. That's why, that's why I'm asking. You've got two cars in there, but obviously with just a van in there, there's plenty of-
No, because once you put the van in and you move the van over another two or three feet, now you have three feet from the house to get in, onto the flat paved area. You've got an eight foot, nine foot van, a five foot ramp coming out of the van. The, the area between the ramp and the house and the ramp from the van becomes much smaller for him to maneuver. The only way I could probably do it is if I align the ramp and the van and the ramp from the house exactly so he can go down and up. Instead of trying, if, if it's not aligned, you'd have to come down out of the house, maneuver in about a five foot area and straighten himself out to get back into the van. There will no longer be two cars in there.
So, may I add? So I just wanted to comment on Mayor Noack's comment about the two cars being in that location. It does look like if you had moved one of the cars out, you would be able to still be able to maneuver the other van in.
The van's much longer and wider than the car.
I'm sorry.
In these two cars being shown.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, there's two cars in that port, but you only need one car to help accommodate to your son, is that correct?
That's correct. And the other car would be out in the front of the house.
Right.
Okay, but what I'm trying to say is, once you move that post over the van, which is going to be much wider than the car, or not much wider, now I have a ramp coming out of the van, okay, which is five feet long. And three feet from the house is the other ramp. So once it moves over, the accessible area between the ramp and the house and the ramp and the van will not give him enough room to maneuver his scooter from one van, one ramp to the next. So we're just asking for an extra two feet of maneuverability space and basically one foot, one inch for the post.
I apologize, but maybe I'm not understanding. If, if the car, if that other Vico on the left in this video, or in this photo here, is removed from this, from the carport and you move the van over closer to the ramp to the home, wouldn't that be sufficient space? wouldn't that be sufficient space?
It would be...
Right. I understand, there's two ramps, but then you would be, there would be sufficient space to be able to get into.
Sufficient minimum space. So we'd have to pretty much line up the ramps so he can go down one and up the other. If, if the van wasn't, you know, I, I mean, you see the size of his scooter. You're going to give him this much room?
So I'm sorry?
Through the van ramp.
Yeah, so...
I mean, you're asking him to take this scooter from this ramp and maneuver in there and get over to a ramp in the van. Okay, this doesn't, this doesn't give an absolute, uh, correct viewing of what it would be like for the maneuverability between the two ramps.
So generally speaking, you're saying that there aren't two cars that are parked back there, and there's only one vehicle that is parked for him to maneuver?
Currently, there are two cars back there. I'm 73 years old. Right now, I lift him into the car. We're currently looking to get a handicap van because I can no longer, it's becoming very difficult to lift him into the car. So he's going to have to go from the house into the handicap van to gain access to the public areas.
Okay. I, I've wanted to ask these questions just so that I can get clarification. So I appreciate you providing more detail on the accommodations that's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sokach?
Yeah, um, I'm just wondering what you think the cost would be for you to relocate that pole? I know you've spent a lot of money appealing this to the council and to the planning commission.
I, I would say probably $15,000, $20,000. I have to move two posts. And I'm also looking to buy a $90,000 handicap van. So it's significant.
Haley, I, I, I'm trying to, I, me personally, I would love to see an engineer's discussion on this rather than planning. And so, from my perspective, I'd like to have, you know, one of our engineers do the design with the discussions on the ramps so we can actually see what the issue is. It's really hard for all of us, because I don't think any of us here are engineers, to be able to figure this out, to understand it, understand what's reasonable or not. So I would ask that we have one of our city engineers take a look at this, if this is all right with council, and that we come back and revisit that once we have an engineer's discussion on this, the structure as it stands now and what the accommodations were going to occur.
Just to clarify, are you asking like for a, like structural engineer or more of a look at the space with the ramps?
I would like to, I, that and a better understanding from the building officials on, on the structure of, of what stands there currently and what would have to be done in order to move a post back, how that would impact at all. And then also the ramp structures from a, a van, ramp, ramp. And so I think, from my perspective, I don't feel like I've got a good sense of how that, all that engineering works to know what makes sense and doesn't. So that, that would be my request, that we come back and visit that after we have a chance to look at that, if my council members agree with that.
Um, I think the applicants want someone to...
Yes, Alex, did you want to say something? You can actually lower the dais as well. I don't know if it's, um... There you go. Yeah, I don't want to, yep.
So, I don't, I'm not sure. But I have gone on and off ramps a lot over my time in my wheelchair. And, uh, it's just very difficult to maneuver. Um, I've gone on and off a, a bus before, and I've actually fall, fallen because the ramp was too steep. So the reasonable accommodation, I mean, it's just, it's more for my mindset of being safe and also for my safety alone.
No, thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. And, uh, again, um, anybody else have...
If I may, if I may, Mayor, I, I support your idea. I, I think there's, because I think there's some things, when you're talking about moving posts back and engineering, and, I mean, there are certain solutions that could be made to help mitigate this. And it's also too, it's like, I'm having a little bit of a, you've explained it, you've explained it as best you can. And, and, and I'm trying to figure, you know, I'm looking at this from like three feet, five feet, 12 feet. And it's, and then you have 20, and it seems like, to me, it's like, well, it's cut and dry. There's plenty of room. But you're telling us that it's not. And so because of the, the, the angle of which you have to get this car in, and so I would be supportive of having an engineer look at this and try to see if there's something that can be done with moving that post, whether it's knee bracing or something that can, if you move that post back or something that can be done without, you know, there, there might be a solution here that doesn't involve, you know, an extensive remodel on this. And, and at this point, you know, you don't have, I don't, do you have the van yet purchased? Okay, so they don't have the van yet purchased. So, you know, maybe, I don't know how long that will take, that's, that their discretion. But perhaps, you know, rather than just, just making a decision right now, I would be supportive of seeing if an engineer could come in there and take a look at this. And, and, and then rather than us trying to kind of eyeball it. And if, if possible, too, maybe if they could take some pictures or something from the side. I, I want to see, or, yeah, or like a video or something to see him coming into that. Because quite honestly, when I look at this right now, it looks like he's got plenty of space. So I, I would be curious about the challenge on that, so.
The way it sits right now, we do have plenty of space.
Yeah, right.
It is right now.
Right.
One car's moving, right now, we do have plenty of space. But what you're asking, all's we're asking is for a one foot, one inch.
Right.
Reasonable, one foot, one inch reasonable conversation with the pole. Now it's going to be engineered and it's, it's up to you all, thank. I mean, now, right now, the way it sits, it is accessible. Once that post moves in, does that actually give him enough room where he feels safe going in and out of the house into the van?
Right.
That's...
And another big one is, you know, we live on the court.
You have to speak into the microphone. Sorry.
We live on the court, so it's not a just straight, back the car, straight back in. It's this big, you know, get it this way. I mean, the, the beeping is going the entire time, you know. But just to angle your car back there, and then a van is going to be even that much harder to angle back there. Anyway, it, it's, we just, we didn't think that asking for two feet, you know...
It's, it's, when you only have five feet setback, even one foot is a big deal. And, and I, I, you know, I hate to sound sort of unruly, but if everybody takes extra feet in a five-foot setback, it, it ends up being a big deal. So, but it doesn't sound like much. It is from a perspective of, you know, yours is a reasonable accommodation, but realize that, that the standards are set so that there are certain, um, certain building aspects that everything isn't so crowded. So I appreciate your reasonable accommodation. But if everybody says it's only one feet, we'll have bigger issues. But yours is a reasonable accommodation, so it's different, and I appreciate that. But I, the city manager would like to speak, so if you'd just give me a second, please.
I just wanted to offer to the council for consideration. It may make more sense, casual observation, to have the applicant submit something that satisfies the recessed post. And the reason I say that is rather than have city staff design something that might actually not meet the requirements, their needs, it might meet the requirements of the city perhaps, or the five-foot setback, but it might make more sense for the applicant to submit something for the city to react to and evaluate so that we are aware that it may, there may be a solution there that satisfies everyone. But it would be better for the city staff to evaluate than to, than to propose or create that.
Well, I would suggest that maybe the city engineer work with, with the family to, to figure that out. Because what they're saying is they can't move the post. And so them coming back with a response when they, they're indicating they can't, that's why I'd like a city, an engineer to work with them to see if there is an option that works. Janet?
Yeah, I just don't want to get into a situation where we have a city engineer designing something for them.
No, I realize, but if, for us to make a decision on some engineering schematics here is really difficult to say, you move it back five feet and they're going to have to do the whole structure over. To me, we can't, we can't decide on that if we don't know, truly understand whether there's an engineering issue or not.
What if, what if we have a city engineer look at it and provide the council an opinion?
Yeah, that's fine.
That work?
Yeah, I just, I would like an engineer to take a, take a look at that.
Okay.
Amanda?
Um, I don't need to see an engineer. Um, I think what the family is requesting is very reasonable. It's one foot. Um, I understand, um, you know, that people should apply for permits. And, you know, it's unfortunate that they didn't, um, understand. We don't want to see a precedent of folks, you know, coming after the fact and asking for a permit. But I think this is a very unusual situation. The way the house is situated is unusual. You know, this is a family with a disability. It's only one foot, it's only the size of a ruler. I think we should accommodate the request, and they've already come out twice. I personally...
Amanda, can you hold off on your decision? I, I just want to finish questions.
Okay.
And then, and then we can discuss, we'll go to public comment, and then we'll go to discussion. Okay? Thank you very much. Any, any additional questions?
I just wanted to add a comment that, um, you know...
We can hold comments until, just questions right now. Then we'll do public comment, and then we come back for comments.
Okay.
Okay.
So I have one more question then for the applicant. Have you looked into having an engineer take a look at the possibility of being able to have it appropriately ADA accommodated for your family? I mean, I understand that this was built without permits, but when it was built, there had to have been some sort of, you know, structural engineer or someone to put it together.
I did not have an engineer look at it.
Okay.
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 I mean, I just tried to build it to, to support the, the, the space we needed.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. You can sit down, then we'll go to public comment. Leon, do we have any public comment on this item?
Public comment, correct.
Okay. Then we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Amanda, I believe you've already given your comments? Yes?
I did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, do I need to make a motion or not?
Well, why don't we get everybody's comments, and then we can, and I've got Janet signaling, giving me hand signals.
We're going to have public comment.
I, I asked for public comment, there was none.
There was none, okay. Sorry.
Okay. So I've had two discussion. Councilmember Obolinski, you want to comment at all?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, this is a tough scenario because I understand the accommodation that, that, that you're looking for. And also, I understand the needs of the city. Um, you know, I built a lot of things in my own house. I've done a lot of things in my own house as well. And, and, you know, the reason that there's permits is because they want to make sure that things are built to standard. And had this been, I believe that had this been gone through the permitting process, the structure would have been designed in a way that probably would have met, met the setbacks or would have been designed in a way to accom, make a reasonable accommodation and planning. Um, I understand, and I kind of, I kind of agree with you, I want to hear from engineering, but I also want to hear from planning on how they came up with, did they just go with a line? Or did they actually look at the structure itself? I, I, I mean, I kind of read through, but I'm in the same boat as you where it's kind of tough when you're trying to look at it. And I'm sorry I went into the weeds earlier because I was trying to really understand the concept of how do we move a post back that, that way? And I'm, and, and I'm not saying whether I agree or disagree with what it is that they're trying to build. I just want to know if we can make everyone happy. Make, make, make sure that we're making them happy, that they can get their van in at the same time, follow the rule of law. That's all.
Okay. Councilmember Law?
Um, I, I just wanted to add that I, I really appreciate you providing more details, the applicant, and also our planning staff in regards to what the zoning requirements are and that there are no two situations that are the same, right? And in this case, it is a reasonable accommodation that is necessary. The planning commission did actually provide a modification, right, which was allowable. And so, you know, when I'm looking at this in the picture, it does look as though there is opportunity to remove one of the carport, one of the cars out for reasonable accommodation. But hearing from the applicant indicating that it's actually not enough space is also something that I need to consider in regards to the needs of the family and the person who's actually needing this additional space to maneuver around. And so when I look back in the code, and it talks about reasonable accommodation and how it could be waived, I, I can't understand how we got to this point where it wasn't waived through the pa, planning commission. Um, and, and so when you brought up the suit, Mayor Noack, about the engineering and also asking the applicant about engineering structural for the carport, um, I think it is reasonable actually to ask for something like that so that we can see what would meet both the standards for our code as well as the accommodations of the applicant.
Yep. Okay. So it's, it, it seems like somebody want to make a, a motion on, on having the engineer come back, and then we can address the, um, the accommodation at that point in time? Or you want additional comment? Sure.
If I may, Mayor.
Yeah.
I think if we, if we don't want, you know, yeah, I guess it's a motion to not have the engineer, a city engineer look at it, or not. I mean, we could, you know, you could do a straight-up vote right now. Um, or we could have the engineer look at it and then come back and vote on it again. So, you know...
We could just vote on a continuation until, vote on a continuation. So we're not voting on the combination at this point. We just vote on a continuation until the, a city engineer gave us his opinion on, on the structure.
Now, Mayor, if that continuation doesn't pass, then we, then we're...
Then we're, then we're back to voting on something else. But if, if, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I, I will make a motion to continue this item, to have a city engineer work with the applicant to possibly design a solution that will mitigate this, this, uh, this offset one-foot, uh, possibility.
We don't want them to design it.
Not design it.
We just want them, and city engineer to give us an opinion on the ability to do that.
Then you have the city engineer give an opinion on this, on this particular, focused around the, the post being moved potentially, and in what direction that post is.
All, all second to the vice mayor's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Law?
Yes.
Obolinski?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Sokach?
No.
Noack?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So we will come back with, a city engineer will take a look and come back to us, and then we will take a vote on the appeal at that time. Okay? Thank you for, all of you for attending. We'll move on now to 10.2, discussion on potential commercial cannabis ordinance modifications. And I believe Troy Fujimoto is going to speak to us on this.
Thank you, Mayor Noack, councilmembers. Uh, the second item for discussion this evening is related to a commercial cannabis request for direction of, for staff. Uh, the request is a question to the city council on whether to further explore modifications to existing cannabis provisions, including modifying code provisions related to commercial cannabis businesses within the city. And I would note that currently, the city allows two medical delivery-only businesses. Uh, just briefly, some background. Uh, the city went through a very long cannabis ordinance amendment back in 2019. Um, at, after multiple meetings with the planning commission and multiple meetings with the city council, uh, what was, what was eventually put into code was the allowance for two medical, non-storefront businesses in the city, delivery only, if you will. Uh, there would be a two-phase review, there would be a business retailer permit process. And after whoever was able to go through that process, the two winners, however you want to word it, would then move forward with the conditional use permit process with the planning commission, and if necessary, with city council. So it, it currently is a two-phase review process. More recently, background, and I would note that since that 2019 ordinance amendment, the city hasn't had any applicants or requests or any businesses that took up the request for medical delivery. Uh, but more recently, the planning commission held a discussion on the question of expanding cannabis sales to adult-use recreational, so it'd be more than medical. A majority of the commission decided no further action was necessary to modify existing cannabis provisions. Um, since that time, city staff has done some additional research or, research or data collection, um, including looking at surrounding cities, including Contra Costa County, Contra Costa County cities. Um, there are a couple that do allow cannabis businesses, and they're listed here. If I need to go through that. Um, I don't have our city on here, but you know what we, what we allow. Um, and I would note that as part of when we looked at other cities, we did look at existing cannabis businesses. Um, and there are about four that are within close proximity to the city. When I say... When I say proximity, we're looking at no further than about a mile and a half away from the city. Some financial considerations, just based on input from our finance group. Cannabis-related revenue has been relatively flat in the county. This is a four-year timeframe. Future revenue is expected to normalize relative to city size. So currently, there are some cities that may have a smaller population, but because not every city allows cannabis, their revenue is much larger than would be expected. For example, if you had the only Target in town, you'd probably get a disproportionate share of that revenue. But once Target populates everywhere, then it kind of normalizes. Sales tax generation is also not as initially estimated. Some safety considerations, input from our police department is the potential for increased violent crimes. Cannabis businesses have a large amount of cash and cannabis on site, which unfortunately sometimes tends to go hand in hand with criminal activity. And a history of crimes associated with cannabis businesses, including locally, even though we don't have a business, there has been some criminal activity related to that. And in general, could have an elevated overall risk to the surrounding community. So with that summary, staff request direction from the city council whether to pursue modifications to the municipal code to allow retail storefront cannabis operations and if directed, to identify what factors to consider or study when drafting amendments. That's it for me, but there are various staff here for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, questions? Okay, Councilmember Walensky?
So, you know, I was sitting there thinking about it and as we look at this issue, it's, I think it's important to kind of look at the current council goals. So one of the things I was looking at, I wanted to ask Chief Vermillion on this, is one of the first things is a city that is safe. And with cannabis businesses, in your opinion, how does that align with our city goal, the city is safe? And also, number five, a city that provides efficient and effective public services. I mean, would this put an additional strain on resources? These are the two things I wanted to ask you.
Good evening, Mayor Noack, council members. Yeah, the police department's support is that we do believe it is, it has a public safety component for tonight's discussion. The police department is just prepared to talk about sales. We're not concerned with the use of marijuana, be it for medical purposes or recreational. It's the sales of marijuana. Nor are we concerned with people growing marijuana for personal use, be it medical or recreational. In regard to sales of marijuana, it's generally speaking, it's done three ways. It's done completely illegal with no regard for state law. There's places that follow some of those state laws and ignore others. And then there's businesses that completely comply with all regulations. One thing that, in regard to public safety and crime, that all three of those conduits have is they're all targeted by crime to include violent crime. For reasons stated, they have cash and they have large quantities of marijuana. Speaking of the illegal or illicit acts, Pleasant Hill in 2004, these are for the illegal sales of marijuana. And then I'll get to the legal sales of marijuana. In 2004, a guy by the name of Merlin Fidler was murdered in his apartment on Golf Club Road. He was selling marijuana from his apartment illegally. In 2014, there was a home invasion in Gallery Walk. A guy that was operating illicitly, he was following some of the laws. He had a medical marijuana dispensary, he had signage inside his condo. And he was a target of a home invasion. Thankfully, nobody was injured in that, but they came in armed. And then in 2018, on North Drive, right near our high school, Ashri Eloy was selling marijuana from his house. And he was the victim of a robbery. And he was shot and killed selling marijuana from his house illegally. Now, getting to the legal sales of marijuana, we don't have any storefronts, we don't have any legal sales. Looking at surrounding communities, the city of Benicia has a storefront dispensary. They've had burglaries and they also had a takeover robbery. When they did have their takeover robbery, the suspects were armed with rifles, not just handguns, but rifles. Martinez had a robbery in 2021 and then they had a fatal officer involved shooting burglary in 2023 at their dispensary. And then in Oakland, 2023, they lost an officer. Guan Lee was responding to a burglary in progress at a dispensary storefront and he was shot and killed. And then lastly, in March of 2024, Peter Popovich was believed to be, he was targeted by gang members. He was believed to have large quantities of marijuana. He did not, he just had packaging, but he was seen leaving a dispensary in Oakland, followed to his house in Pleasant Hill, and two people lost their lives that day. In closing on that issue, we can't support it to what, all three of these gentlemen, Peter Popovich, Ashri Eloy, and Merlin Fidler, they all were targeted because they were selling marijuana, either illegally or legally. Although Peter Popovich wasn't selling, he was transporting what people thought he was doing that. To the second part of your question, sir, it's hard to get, estimate what kind of police resources we would need, but we would need something. Usually, we staff things in reaction. It's hard to also say to crime prevention and looking forward, we can do things, but it's very hard to measure. I will say that I do believe it will put a strain on our resources. And then when something bad happens, like the Peter Popovich case, that's where you see the resources really get strained. We're still able to operate and keep a safe city, but we have to manage our resources to do that. Hopefully, that answered your question, sir.
Yes, yes, it does, thank you.
Additional questions?
Just for the, for this city, in our packet that said that cities, neighboring cities make about 1.2 to 1.3 million in gross revenues from legal cannabis businesses. And I'm just wondering which community is which type of businesses? And, you know, can you compare that to another business?
Eric can chime in.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I reached out to some of my counterparts in the city of Martinez and the city of Concord. They gave me an estimate of about 1.2 to 1.3 million. Each city is a little bit different. So for example, Martinez allows for retail, manufacturing, as well as testing labs. Concord does those three, as well as a distribution site. What I can't get because they are taxes, I can't get the exact amounts for what each of those provides. But that's their gross was about 1.2 to 1.3, but they provide a variety of, not just retail, but those other items as well.
And then, isn't it true that if it's medical marijuana, it can't be taxed? How does, how does that work?
That part, I would have to follow up on that. I believe it's taxed either way, but I could be wrong. I would have to follow up.
Janet? My understanding is there's no sales tax on medical.
That's my understanding as well.
Another question is, why do we think nobody has applied? Or have people applied for the delivery, you know, cannabis that we approved and they just didn't score high enough or just nobody's applied?
No one has even applied, so I couldn't tell you if they would score well or not. I did hear from maybe one in the past that have said, that have asked, well, what do you allow? And we've explained what we do allow. And they essentially responded and said, well, that's not really for us. And so they didn't apply. That was just one instance. But, you know, I don't know specifically why they do not apply, but that may have something to do with it. I'm not sure.
Is there any, my thought was, there was some discussion at some point that they would not only deliver medical, it was medical and recreational that was more likely to get people applying than just delivering medical.
I mean, that may be, the more options you have, the more attractive. But I didn't get into that level of conversation. It was a simple question, what does the city allow? I would relay what we allowed and then there was just nothing after that.
Thanks. Councilmember Law?
Yeah, so for, the current resolution allows for medical marijuana for delivery, right? And then also six plants that, for someone, that they can grow in their home, is that correct?
Yes, the plants that anyone can grow is separate from the business.
Okay, it's separate from the business. I just wanted to state that really quickly. So that means that we've already kind of followed the state, the state law in regards to coming up with a modification for our local city to basically meet the standards for part of the state. And then second question is actually for Eric. When you mentioned the financial revenue that was received, Martinez is a different population, it's a smaller population and Concord is about a larger population. So is the 1.2 to 3 million, how does that fall into play? Like, which city is actually generating that amount of revenue? And I see that HDL is also included in assessment in there. So it's not kind of apples to apples on how that is.
Again, both cities have a different mixture of what they allow. So I couldn't give you an exact, is it because of retail that they're making that 1.2 or 1.3 million? Is it because of the distribution sites? I know that the population is obviously different in each of those locations. That's just the information that was provided from my counterparts.
Thank you. So we don't actually have actual data to provide that shows what types of businesses that currently exist that is generating that amount of revenue?
Correct, I just have a gross amount because again, once that becomes tax information, they can only give me so much information. And I will also just add that Martinez and Concord both have different ways of how they collect their cannabis revenue. For example, I believe Martinez is a gross percentage of gross receipts. And Concord, at least for the retail, I'm not sure what they decided to do with their manufacturing and testing sites. They came up with some type of developer agreements with each of the retailers.
Thank you for that.
Okay, Councilmember Walensky, do you have something? Question?
The last question I had, so currently we only offer medical and they're looking for retail cannabis within the city limits. In your opinion, does this align within the city council goals of 2025?
In my opinion, I don't know if I could say if that aligns. I mean, there are five goals.
Right.
And they are essentially what the council believes is their goals and how it's met. I don't know if I could opine as to whether allowing or expanding cannabis aligns with those goals. There are some things that were pointed out by our police department that one could question is in alignment. But there's other things such as revenue generation that may be in alignment. So I wouldn't necessarily want to tell the council if this meets your goals based on this particular topic.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Chass, do you have anything?
No, no question.
No questions?
May I ask another question, please? Thank you. So I also have another question in regards to zoning for this particular type of commercial space. Would you please let the public and council know if, and if this was a storefront that had opened or would be a place to open, what locations would be zoned for this type of commercial space?
That would be a decision we'd have to make. That's not-
There are specific-
Well, currently, the-
But if we had a retail, it wouldn't necessarily be the same, we could change that.
But it would be under specific zones, though, right?
You could select zones, you could do distances. I mean, there's a lot of ways to do it. Currently, we allow it by zone for our medical delivery only.
But retail would probably be, my bet is retail would be a different decision. Just as we did, spent a lot of time on zoning on gun sales. You know, how distance from schools, distance from parks, things like that. So that would be very different, it could be very different from what we allow in the delivery zoning.
And then so currently for the delivery zoning, where is that currently?
Currently, it's RB zoning. And then most recently, to sync up with our new zoning, there's our mixed-use zoning. And there are distance provisions included with that.
Right, thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, we'll go to public comment.
There are no public comment cards.
Yeah, that's all right. Good, you can fill in the card after you're done, just make sure you fill it in before you leave.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Matt Light and just over six months ago, I put in an application for his own amendment. It has kind of been the impetus to get us to this point and be talking about it. And so for those that I haven't met, I wanted to introduce myself. Definitely want to talk with you and just address some of the concerns. You know, safety certainly is a concern. You know, if you go back over 20 years and look at all the cities and things that have happened, it looks bad on a list, but look at robberies that are just happening in general, not just in cannabis, just in the world. You look at Nordstroms, you have people robbing Nordstroms, you have people robbing an Apple store. If I was here to open Apple store, would you be worried that there was going to be crime involved? Even though historically, if you look, an Apple store is a lot more likely to be robbed than a cannabis store. These are very secure locations, they have security. There's cameras everywhere, the state has put in video retention laws and all sorts of stuff to make them absolutely safe. It'd be one of the safest locations in the city. And speaking of location, the state has also put in there, which you have also adopted in your medical only rule, the buffer zone from sensitive uses. So that is already in place. I don't think you'd probably override that and that would be, you know, something that would carry forward. As far as the revenue, most of this, besides the county, the county actually put a 4% tax on retail. All the other cities are doing development agreements. So, you know, we can follow the county and put a development agreement together at 4% or some, whatever the right number is. We can certainly do that. And to the question of why no medical, there are zero retail medical only licenses in the state of California. It's not a sustainable business and you'll bankrupt if you do that. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. No other public comments?
Sorry, Mayor Noack, just the email comment that came in.
Matt, if you would please, oh, yes, we did have a email comment from, sorry. I don't have a name. I don't have a name, but we did receive an email. Sorry. Oh, okay. Yep, Yana Rogers, we did receive an email comment from Yana Rogers, thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the dais for discussion. Go ahead, Councilmember Sokach?
So I just ran for office in 2024 and I knocked on a bunch of people's doors and I asked them, what are your, you know, concerns about Pleasant Hills? What are your visions for the future? Not one person expressed an interest to me in seeing cannabis retailers in the city. It seems like this request is only coming from folks in the industry. I even went back and watched all the 2019. There was nobody at that time that spoke in favor of retail establishments in Pleasant Hill. I've never received an email. So I'm not inclined to pursue this until I get, you know, more ground swelling of residents who are interested in this.
Vice Mayor Chass, do you have any comments?
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, going, looking back at 2019, you know, there was, actually, there was someone, an attorney that did speak. The one, and she said something about the fact that there wasn't, you know, that there was a study that it didn't cause increased crime or anything like that. And that really may be the case. But needless to say, we've had some very public, you know, we had a murder here in Pleasant Hill, which we don't have a lot of surrounding around that. We had one in Martinez. So that gives me, that gives me concern. I'm also concerned that, you know, I look at this 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars. You know, those are for bigger cities and I think they're also, I think, you know, we didn't really get a breakdown of what that revenue would be. But I got to think it's not just, it's not just to have that kind of revenue. I don't think it could just be retail. It would have, it would have to involve all these other things. And so, and I don't know, I mean, that is a great unknown to me as well. And so, and the other thing is, is just supply and demand, which maybe I know maybe the most about compared to some of the more other technical things here. But, and that's just, you know, if we didn't have any retail cannabis, let's just say from, you know, the Contra Costa County line down to say Danville. I don't know, you know, it would, might be, you know, I'd think of, maybe I'd look at it a little differently, maybe, or I'd give it longer consideration. But we have two places, three places that are right. I mean, Stizzy is literally like right there. So I kind of feel like the retail cannabis- So I kind of feel like the retail cannabis needs of our city are being met with the locations in, the two locations, at least that I know of in Martinez, and the one here in Pacheco, and then the one in Concord. So I really don't think I'm ready to have our staff time being spent on this at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Wolenski?
Yeah, so, as far as Vice Mayor Shas was saying, I went and talked to several folks from many different walks of life, and asked them about this issue. And yeah, we do have Stizzy, and we have Cocoa Farms that are fairly close, so you can go purchase retail, you can get delivery, there's a lot of ways you can get your fix if need be. But the most important things is, for me, is, I really went and took a look at our city council goals, and I really, and the reason I hit home with that today is, I don't think that having cannabis is part of our city council goals, in my opinion. And the folks I talked to said, hey, I can drive across the border and get it. So at this point, I really don't see us spending city staff time to go forward with this, because I really haven't, like Amanda said, I haven't heard anybody, you know, come with a sign and going, hey, we really, we want cannabis, we want it now, or anything. It's just, it seems like a very small percentage of folks are looking into this.
Councilmember Law?
I'd also have to agree with the rest of the council members here as well, on what they had stated. I also think that safety is a huge concern, and as we have heard from the chief, Scott Vermillion, in regards to the burglaries, the crime increase in all of the issues that come about with having a retail space storefront like this, it can be troublesome for our public and our community. And secondly, we also had the planning commission already recommend the vote of five to one to deny having a storefront. And so, looking at the HDL assessment and hearing from Eric in regards to the 1.1 or 1.2, 1.3 amount, we actually don't know what is actually part of the revenue stream that's coming in. And again, population and size with different cities is not the same comparison to our city as well. We have many schools in this district as well, as the city itself, my district itself, I would say, would have four schools there, but our city has a whole bunch of schools. And I also think that, within proximity and distance, as Vice Mayor Shas, sorry, can't speak today, had mentioned earlier, is that there are so many other storefronts that are close by, and it doesn't necessarily mean that people are not getting their medical needs met. If they were to get a delivery, it would be very simple for them to get close to those particular locations. And in another situation is that it is less than a mile away. That's what it states in the agenda as well. So with that being said, I am not inclined to having city staff time.
So the only comments I want to make are a little broader, because this was just asking us to discuss our current ordinance, and I was the only one that was on that 2019 council member marathon, I guess, on this item. And if I recall correctly, the reason we didn't do it at that time was because everybody was new, and we did not want to be the only one on the map to have it, because we thought that would certainly attract a lot of issues as a result of that. The only thing that I would question is, I wouldn't have a problem with delivery of medical and recreational. Right now, we only allow medical, and I think that's, well, I think, I think we're kidding ourselves that delivery of recreational is not happening at the same time as medical. And, and so, I'm in agreement with all of you on the retail front. I have a little different opinion on whether we take a look at the ordinance, on whether we allow delivery of medical and recreational. That's, that's the only thing. So when I looked at it, I looked at it in a little broader sense than whether we're just going to do retail or not. So, anyway, I will just make that comment as to what I thought we might consider different than strictly the retail side of it. There are plenty of people that can easily get medical prescriptions, but there are people that also use it for pain and other things, that get it recreational. And so I think limiting that delivery on that aspect, I felt was maybe overly severe. So...
May I ask a follow-up question for you to possibly expand on why you are thinking about recreational delivery? Like, what would be the benefits to our community to allow for recreational delivery?
Well, it's just, I, there are, I think, I think the line is very gray there, first off. There are plenty of people that can get delivery of medical with a prescription, anybody seems to be able to get a prescription for medical cannabis. But there are people that have the same need that don't necessarily get a prescription for it. And so, I'm not opposed to those people being able to get delivery the same as they would get medical delivery currently. And so, that's, that's, that's the only basis for it, is that if people are easily able to get a prescription or not, one's taxed, the other is not, I wouldn't necessarily draw a line there. Because I think it's happening anyway, and it's been happening even prior to the state laws changing. So it's, for me, it's just, it's a matter of practicality more than anything else. I believe it's happening regularly, and that's the only reason that I thought maybe our ordinance ought to reflect more of practicality than anything else.
I was also watching the video back in 2019, because this is before my time, before I became a city council member, and I recall that Tim Flaherty had said that he was able to order something to his house, even though he didn't have a medical card, and which he still has to this day, so he had...
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. It was done illegally before. It's still being done illegally, delivery, but it's happening all the time. And so I just, that was the only thing, when I looked at the ordinance, I said, I would probably loosen it up to allow delivery of medical and recreational, because it's happening anyway. And so that was the only thing I thought I would consider. I didn't, I wasn't going to consider the other aspects, that was the one that I would have considered, with change in the ordinance. Councilmember Saka?
I still don't think we would get a lot of applications, because I feel like with delivery, it's about where the real estate is the cheapest, and so, you know, I guess, I don't think we'd have anything to lose by adding that, because I still don't think we would get applications.
What I'm just saying, it's from a practical standpoint of what's happening.
And you also have to get the, you know, the real estate developers to agree to, I mean, the leasing agents.
That's, that's the only reason I, I just brought that up, because I brought that up back in 2019, the same, same comment. So I don't think it's a big deal either way, honestly. I just wanted to bring up that was the one factor focused on whether we were going to allow retail or not, and I wanted to acknowledge the fact that there was more variance than just the retail aspect of it, that we ought to be thinking about, are there other things beside the retail that sort of initiated this discussion? That the discussion was really broader than that, was, is there anything we should change in our ordinance in general? And that's testing, you know, manufacturing, delivery, and all of that. So we tended to get focused on retail, but I didn't want us to forget that there were other aspects that we could consider as well. So that was, that was really my intent on bringing that up.
Okay. Thank you for that, because I just wanted to understand if it was more of a revenue standpoint to allow for recreation, because medical itself, you don't get taxed for it, and then for recreational, you may get some tax benefits. I don't know if that answered at this point.
This was really a practical statement, and a statement to remind everybody that it was a broader discussion than just whether we would allow retail or not. There are a lot of different aspects that the ordinance addresses, and that the discussion was, give direction on the entire ordinance, whether we change anything or not. So it wasn't just, do we allow retail or not? It was to discuss the entire ordinance, so I just wanted to make sure everybody realized that. Councilmember Wolenski?
So yeah, I mean, to back to the basics of, we're asking, making a decision whether we're going to be asking staff to take resources in this action. I, I don't think it's necessary to ask staff to take any further resources at this time. I think, you know, my stance has been, I'm going to go back to our goals. You know, having a city that provides a high quality of life in a small-town atmosphere, in my eyes, is not selling recreational cannabis, and none of my neighbors that I've talked to agree, they all agree with me on that aspect. I have not met one resident that I spoke to that says, hey, it's a great idea. So I'm going to continue with my stance. I don't, I think that we should just not move forward with asking staff. That's my final statement. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, anything else? So I'm assuming you've got enough direction from us. It appears that no additional work needs to be done at this time.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. With that, we'll go on to item 11, adjournment, there being no further business. This meeting is adjourned, or regular city council meetings scheduled for Monday, March 17th, 2025, and thank you, and good night.